Jeffrey, are we gonna start?
You wanna go look for him?
No, it's all right. Don't come in eventually. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 8th, 2010 meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right.
We have a few sets of meeting minutes which we need to approve. The first one is October 25th, 2010.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Selectman Pierce. Any corrections? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is the meeting minutes of 10:28.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Selectman Fournier. All those in favor, I'm sorry, any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And last but not least, we have November 1st, which was last Monday.
Motion to approve.
So, motion to approve, seconded by Selectman Pierce. Any changes? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next, we have announcements. We have a few. It's that time of year again where our winter parking ban goes into effect. The Goffstown Police Department announces the upcoming winter parking ban that will take effect on November 15th, 2010. The parking ban is in effect for the winter months and that ends on April 15th, 2011. Reminds us how long our winter is. The Goffstown Police Department strictly enforces violations of the overnight parking ban. If weather conditions are favorable, written warnings may be issued during the first week of the ban. If during snow removal operations a vehicle is parked so as to constitute a hazard, its removal may be requested by the Highway Department. The Goffstown Police Department will investigate and make all reasonable attempts to locate the owner. If the owner or operator is not located, the vehicle will be towed at the owner's expense. So, please be aware that in another week, that parking ban will take effect and we don't want anyone getting towed unnecessarily. So, be mindful of that. Any other announcements? I have one. We just mentioned it before. The library is having a Once Upon a Pie. It is a fundraiser for the library at Stark Hall this Saturday. And I think it's, I'm trying to remember the time. I think it's 6:30-ish. And basically, the way that it works is residents of the community as well as professional bakers submit their pies for judging. And there are a variety of different categories. Youth division, there is, I think, there might even be a municipal division this year. Professional baking, et cetera. Catherine, I believe you were a winner last year for your key lime pie.
This is it?
So, there's two things out there. So, if you are a very good baker, please enter a pie in the contest. Call the library for more information. If you are an eater of pies, then you'd wanna come down to Stark Hall because that's where you get to purchase coffee and some pie. Last year Phil had the record, was it 16 slices of pie? Yeah, there's a, and then at the end of the night, if you're disgrunt-
I didn't know that.
I only counted three.
That's all I counted.
That's why Phil's not allowed in Vegas due to the buffet violations. But-
See what I have to go through, the abuse?
The nice thing about this is the food is very good, for one. And secondly, it's a great fundraiser, great fundraiser for the town. Last but not least, if you are somewhat disgruntled about the Board of Selectmen, you do get an opportunity to, they auction off a pie going into, for a Selectman. And last year it was me. And does anybody wanna volunteer for that this year?
I thought you were doing it again.
I can do it, but I think David Pierce might be able to get more money this year. But, you know what we could do?
Is that a comment on the roundabout?
No, I'm challenging you. So, at the end of the night, we do that. And I believe Dick Agnan won that a couple of years ago. So, all right. Any other announcements? Now is our time for public comment. So, if anyone would like to come before the board, just state your name and address and try to limit your comments to about three minutes. David, come on up.
David Nieman from the Conservation Commission. I had an email earlier today. It was regarding the open space disposition of the property from the development on Montalona Road, Blackfire Woods. And the developer seemed a little confused as to what was going on. I just came to clarify. I don't know that there is anything to clarify. But he was asked to submit information, because I know you're gonna do a site walk to look at the property.
Yeah.
A lot of it was talking about wetlands setbacks and limits and stuff. And so, he thought, he just wondered, are you looking at it for something other than-
No, we wanted to get a copy of the map, which we just got in the Selectmen's room, just delineating where there are wetlands and where the homes are going, that type of thing.
Yeah.
We wanted that before, and that was what we requested. And we just got that tonight. And then we have the site walk scheduled and that's-
November 20th, 9:00.
9:00. So, we should be all set.
That was my assumption, that it was just for the sidewalk, but-
And he's responded to- That he's gonna be there with the PLC, I think is gonna be there too? Yep.
So, I just wanted to stop by in case there was any questions or anything that needed to be straightened out.
Essentially, the Planning Board has already made the decision
that according to the yield plan, X number lots could be made and therefore this much area must be satisfied undeveloped. And I thought it was pretty clear. And I thought it was pretty clear to all of you. But if it wasn't, we would've all wasted a lot of time. That's all.
You wanna comment? Okay. Anyone else would like to be heard?
Thank you.
Public comment? You sure? All right.
Ahead of schedule?
We're ahead of schedule, which is always a mixed blessing. So, let's just start with the Town Administrator's Report, Sue.
Okay. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. Sewer Commission meets on Tuesday. Budget Committee on Tuesday. And Town Hall, just a reminder, is closed for Veterans Day on Thursday. In your consensus folder tonight, you have AP warrants. You have an event permit from Paul Filto for Christmas tree sales at 280 Shirley Hill Road. An employee status report on resignation of a crossing guard. And several road tracking forms, acceptance of a drainage maintenance agreement, a waiver of municipal liability for map 3, lot 32A1, 37-1-3. Those are in Code AV. A release of liability for a well at map 7, lot 82. And a performance bond map on map, I'm sorry, performance bond on map 19, lot 30.
Motion to accept the consensus photo.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Correspondence, you just have a summary of the ZDA decisions of November 3rd at tab 6A in your packet. That's more of an FYI. Assessor's recommendations, equalization study. The assessor has reviewed and recommends signature of this to the board. Tax averro lien application, map 4, lot 91. He recommends an intent of timber cut on map 7, lot 49.
Motion to accept the excessive recommendations.
Second? I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
The next one was, you received the maps on Blackbrier and the site walk is scheduled for, again, November 20th at 9:00. Town Hall, 2011 holiday schedule is at tab 6B for your approval.
Need a motion on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you. In light of budget actions, I'd recommend the Board of Selectmen post the amendments with personnel plan that are attached. It's in 6C, near Packet. And they deal with Article 6, Section 2 pay plan, and Section 6 longevity. Basically, just suspending those for 2011, but noting that a special article or separate article would be on the warrant for any increases.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And last but not least, you have an RFP in your packets at tab 6D for a server virtualization project, as you recall. This is by the CIP for this year. And Neil Smith says for your approval before releasing it.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, seconded by Selectman DeVanz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5-0 again.
Thank you.
Nick?
Just a quick question on the personnel plan.
Yes.
Sue, on our default budget calculations, what were the assumptions there?
Steps are in there.
So, they should not be then.
We have, that's up to the board. Steps have always been on default.
Well, I understand that because we've interpreted the personnel plan to be kind of like a contract. But with this motion, there is no steps next year. So, there is no obligation to put that into the default.
No, all this is saying is we didn't put in the Selectmen's budgets.
No, it's saying that we're freezing it and there are no steps or COLAs next year.
Right, but if the default budget passes, you would have that option. The steps.
You can add something in the default budget that's not an obligation to pay.
Right, but it's not the personnel plan that's the obligation. It's the conditional offers of employment that's the obligation.
I don't follow that.
When offers of employment were made to non-union employees, the steps were divulged, that they would get a step annually, but the COLA would be dependent upon Town Meeting vote. Legal had advised us to do conditional offers of employment with that type of specificity.
I understand that, but we just voted to free, if that's the case, then we couldn't stop them. I mean, we're just, we're saying two different things here. If our conditional offer of employment requires steps, then the vote we just took is moosh.
The vote you just took is just in regards to your proposed budget, not the default budget. It's in the Board of Selectmen, I think it says in the Board of Selectmen's operating budget. Goffstown Board of Selectmen has suspended stepping COLA increases in the 2011 operating budget. That's your budget. But if the default budget prevails, then you would have that option. Of steps only, not COLAs, because there's no COLA on the default.
Well, maybe we can have a discussion on that, because I don't-
Will you come back to that?
Please do.
Okay. All right. Hold on one second. And just so the board is aware, we do have to go into non-public session this evening for, one is a legal matter, one will be a personnel matter, and the other one will be the adversely affected reputation of someone other than the board. So, there's three things that we'll be going into non-public for. Sue, is there anything else?
That's it.
All right. We're gonna continue on with committee reports. Budget Committee met last Thursday. At that time, Police Chief Sullivan was in as well as Fire Chief O'Brien. They went over their budgets and responded to questions. The Budget Committee right now is in the, I guess more in the Q and A mode. They're not in what's called deliberations mode. The, there was a lot of discussion about fire hydrant rentals. And just to refresh the board's memory on this subject, the town pays for fire hydrant rentals from the Grassmere Water Precinct, the Village Water Precinct, and Manchester Water Works. I believe that price is somewhere around $170,000. And that's for the use of these hydrants and also for the upkeep on them as well. There are, there were some members of the Budget Committee that were looking to zero out that line. There were some that were looking to decrease the line. And I think that they'll probably keep having those discussions. Bill Gordon was representing the Grassmere Water Precinct. And unfortunately, Dick Fletcher was not at the meeting. So, we'll see how that shakes out. The chief did explain to, he started off the Budget Committee meeting by letting people know that the survey that he does is every two years and he's been doing it since 1992. It is funded solely by, privately. It's done by St. Anselm's College Political Science and Statistics students. They have been doing it for many years. It's part of their, I guess their class project. And so, we tried to at least let the Budget Committee know that this is not a, you know, a tool that's gonna be used politically to discredit anyone. It's just a matter of trying to gauge the community's sentiments on the service that the police department provides. And that it's been done for many, many years. So, I think that there was a, an understanding in that regard. I had talked to a few people over at the polls about that. And, you know, one person said, "Well, you know, you should hold on to the survey results. Don't divulge them." And one of the things I think that our board needs to make a decision on is we don't know what the results are. The results are being tabulated. They'll be done, I would think. I'm told they happen usually around Christmas, in December. But no one knows, you know, what they are. The board, if the board wishes not to release those, I guess we can do that. I don't think it's gonna have an impact either way myself. I don't even know what the results are. So-
I guess I'm not following you. Every time we have that, they've always come in and gave a presentation to the board, explain how they go through-
Right, I guess I don't want to, I guess, I'm not looking to politicize, you know, the survey. The survey results have been done for the last, now we're talking 18 years, I think.
Right.
So, I don't think that it's any different, except that there was a couple of members of the Budget Committee who felt that it might be used to, against them or something, but I- They were just becoming aware of this for the first time? Well, they, yeah, there were several members who got the phone call. And they, and they thought that some of the questions were, weren't, I guess statistically valid. And so, they were, had some concerns about it.
Well, they've always come in, gave a presentation, and Selectmen have always asked how they came about this. The last one that I remember was the girl who came in with it. She was, this was a project that she had to do to graduate, I believe. And it was a whole discussion of how they arrived, because it was Dr. Dupree that was in charge of it. He originally formulated the work with them to put this together. How the questions are asked, how they generate the questions, and how they generate who they pick. Because some people said, gee, I've never been called. I mean, and they decide themselves how they're gonna-
I just think that our board, if there are concerns, then let's have that, we should have that discussion now, not have the discussions when the results are in. Because then regardless of the outcome, it can be portrayed either way. If the results are not favorable to the police department, you withheld them because you didn't want the community to know about it. Or if they were favorable, you withheld them because you didn't wanna sway the voters to, I don't know. I don't know if there's an easy way or how on this.
The difficulty I have, this has always been a public process. They've always come into the Board of Selectmen and gave their results. I mean, the board can do what the board wants to do. I mean, I don't, I, you know-
But do you understand where I'm coming from here? If, we do not know the results of this thing. So, pro or con, holding on to them could be viewed, on the flip side of it, maybe you don't wanna sway a voter, but then on the other side of it, you have public information that you're not divulging until after an election. That doesn't look too good either. So, I just think that we should decide as a group, either are we gonna, are we going to release it once it's known, or are we not going to release it until after the election?
It was always part of their class presentation, that that was part of it. They had to come in and present. When was the last one that we saw?
I'll get you just a second.
I don't recall one recently.
I remember, the one I remember was when Dr. Dupree, when he retired.
That was part of the class. They had to come in and do their presentation.
Right, it was part, it was part of the project.
All right, Nick, you had a-
Is this question being raised because of the timing?
Yeah.
Some people are saying, someone is saying-
Yeah, that was, it was raised at the Budget Committee because, you know, why? I don't think members of the committee knew that it was done every two years. And that's why the chief came in and explained it, that it was done every two years, that there was no intent to try to discredit anyone or, it's just, they want to gauge the public sentiment as to how they believe, you know, police services are being rendered in the community, good, bad, or indifferent. And I, but some on the Budget Committee may have thought that it was, that this was like the first time it's ever been done, or the first time it's been done in a long time, and that wasn't really the case, so.
Then maybe if the presentation has the caveat that this survey was designed to measure public satisfaction-
Correct.
But in no way measured the public's willingness to pay-
Oh, yeah.
Any taxation. There was nothing addressed there. This way it's very clear.
And that's exactly, that's exactly-
And the questions, quite honestly, I've seen the questions. They're not, they don't go there. They don't.
As long as that's made clear.
They don't say, "Would you be willing to spend more money for it?" No, they just say, "Do you feel safe? Do you think the community is more or less dangerous than it has it right?"
What do you think the biggest crime, uh-
Correct.
Right.
So, it's really more, it takes the pulse of the public's perception of the department. I don't, all right, so-
And it also goes along with the accreditation process.
Right.
And picking up on one of your comments, you might've seen a courtesy copy of the questions.
Right.
That doesn't mean you had input on the nature of the questions.
No, because the Political Science, Statistics Department-
I just wanted to bring that out.
Right.
Right.
A class pro, student class project. Period.
Exactly.
All right.
Are we gonna take a vote on this, or are we all set?
I think the consensus seems to be, we've-
Just asking a question.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, to get that out there. There were some, you know, more discussions about 10% reductions in the budget that was addressed by the chief. One of the big things that came out, which, you know, he clarified, was, you know, he talked, in order to achieve a 10% budget reduction, we have to keep in mind that we go through four months of paying our salary, paying salaries here before we make, take action because the vote is typically in March. P plan and contracts, they have to give certain notice. So, you're, you would then have to make up eight months of those savings. And that's what made it a lot harder for the chief to try to achieve a 10% reduction on the, on the police side. So, tomorrow, we're having another budget, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because if you were gonna reduce the budget by 10%, and you take that number, I believe it comes out to about six offices. But that means that the Board of Selectmen and the chief, the department head, would have to tell those six officers that comes January 1st, you guys don't have a job.
Right, and you can't do that, because you haven't voted on it yet.
We can't do that. Number, other thing is, the Budget Committee hasn't even had its public hearing for its budget at that point, January 1st. So, we can't do that.
Right.
So, then you're trying to make up the 10% come April 1st.
Right.
In a shorter period of time. That's why it takes more office.
The other, now, switching to the Fire Department, there was a discussion. Some members felt that maybe we should go back to a all-volunteer, rather than having a call department, that there would be volunteers. And that many communities across the country have, they don't pay. They just, and I'm not so sure that was an accurate-
Are they volunteering?
What, no, my point was, I'm not, I always have to defer to Nick on some of these things. But I'm not so sure that, when you say that there is a volunteer department in a town in some, in some state, many times they are paying something. Call people are, sometimes, they're paid, but they're considered, they're termed volunteer when they're really-
Right, people use that term interchangeably.
Interchangeable.
Volunteers are not paid at all. Call firefighters are paid just for the time-
But-
-that they respond. But I think one of the things we have to look at is the history and how we got to the point we are here in Goffstown. It's very difficult to spread a broad blanket over fire departments and communities and say, "Well, it works here, or it doesn't work here." Years ago, Goffstown had a, almost predominantly all-call department, but most of the individuals on the call department worked in the town of Goffstown. As Goffstown grew and became a bedroom community, like it or not, many of our residents live outside of the town, or, excuse me, work outside of the town boundaries. So, during the day, when we predominantly have our calls, there's no one available to answer the call. It's not a matter of that they don't want to, or we don't have enough of them, but they're just not available, which is why the town progressed to a full-time department Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Then as years went on and people became busier and they didn't wanna give up their weekends, we needed to expand that coverage to weekends. So, it's easy to say, "Let's go to a call department," or "Let's go to an all-volunteer department." But unless there are people living within the community that are available to answer the calls, that won't work.
The other thing I could add before I get to you, Phil, is, and I forgot to mention this at the meeting the other night, is we did have a volunteer ambulance service in the town for, I know, prior to me getting here. And then JEMSA, as they were called, decided they could no longer do it because they weren't getting that level of volunteerism to support the needs of the town. And Phil, you wanna-
Well, yeah, there's two, two things. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on what Nick said. When you go back, we had Kendall Hadley here, was a factory here in town. It was owned by John Webster, and they used to have a steam, a steam engine in the factory. And that's what they used for the fire calls. And when the guys that, like you said, it was a large factory, so there were a lot of call guys, volunteers. When that was, when that thing went off, they went and John Webster still paid them. Okay? He paid them their regular wages while they were out doing that. And as you said, you know, that factory eventually shut down. And when it shut down, there went the manpower and also a person paying the volunteers to go out to do that. So, things change. And that's why we started with a full-time fire department. That's why, and it was only manned during the daytime. And the volunteers and the call guys still worked at night. And we had that large, that large force. And, you know, over time, things change. Those people, they move on, they pass away. New people come in and that aren't into the fire department. As far as JEMSA is concerned, well, also what happened with that over the years, when we had the ambulance was fully volunteer. It was one thing where you got a call, you went out and, you know, you picked, you took somebody. But as time went on, there became more requirements for the people who were making the phone calls, not the phone calls, the ambulance calls. You needed more training. Because when you pick somebody up, let's say somebody had a heart attack, you're gonna take them in, there were certain things that you had to do. You had to start doing more and more. There became more and more requirements.
Simply EMT, it was more primary type level.
Exactly. And, you know, there were times when the ambulance couldn't come and they wouldn't, they'd pick somebody up in another vehicle. Well, you can't do that today. Okay? But it's happened. It's happened. They took somebody to the hospital in a station wagon.
Okay, I'm gonna continue on. Last but not least, there was a decent amount of conversation at the Budget Committee last week about privatization of services and putting out some of the services that we currently provide. Putting them out to bid to see if what we do is price competitive. Ambulance service was one of them, that came up. I do recall that during the 24/7 study, a few years back, I think we did take a look at privatization on ambulance. The question is, and I know that we've done this periodically with some different departments. I know most notably, in the Department of Public Works, we looked at the privatization of our trash and our recycling. And the Solid Waste Commission did a pretty extensive study and found out that it was considerably less expensive for the town to provide that service as opposed to a private vendor. And I'm sure that there are some others that I think that we have done recently. But the question is, is that, is that something that we want to, you know, take a look at next year in terms of putting, you know, something out to bid to see, you know, what, you know, what it looks like? There's a couple of, there's pros to it. Was it, one of the pros is to see, is the service that we're providing right now, is it price competitive? Can it be done at a lesser cost? The con, you know, on that sometimes is, as with anything, you, sometimes you get a low bid. Then the price gets ratcheted up on the sense of, I was explaining to the Budget Committee on the situation with ambulance, many times towns are asked to forfeit. You know, they give up their ambulances in lieu of getting that contract. And then all of a sudden, if they're, if you're pleased with the service, that could be great. But if you're not pleased with the service and now the contract is up for renewal, now you don't, and now you can't get a good price, now you have to buy two ambulances or three ambulances. So, the other flip side to it is that potential downfall to putting things out to bid a lot is that when you ask people, companies to bid on things and you never accept their bids, they typically don't bid. And I think we've seen that with a few vendors where, "Thank you very much, And I think we've seen that with, with a few vendors where, thank you very much, but you never seem to take us up on it, therefore, we're stopping, we're stopping our bidding. I've also seen it in my limited time here, where we put things out to bid, and we get like two or three bids, so it's not like you're getting, like, people are banging on the door on some of these things. But, I guess my question is, is that, you know, do we want to take a look at a couple of different functions that we have currently to see if it can be done at a less expensive cost? Ambulance being, being one of them. Nick.
Well, off the top of my head, it, it doesn't hurt to answer the question. I mean, we have the caveats, though, that we've run into in the past, is, you know, all of the turmoil that's caused when you start opening up those doors. But I think to, to just basically say, nope, we're not going to look at that, what, what kind of a message are you sending as far as our?
Obligation.
Obligation to try to provide the best service at the lowest cost.
Wasn't the last meeting we were discussing the ambulance service, and they put forty thousand dollars towards the general fund? And so, one would say that anything that would look into privatization of the ambulance fund, they're not going to give us money, they're going to.
Depends, I mean, in some places.
Well, I would expect that they're going to reform the service and take the profit. I mean, I'm just saying, at this point of time, why would I go out to look for privatization bids for, where we're already taking money that we're providing the ambulance, providing the people and the service, and we're putting forty thousand dollars into the general fund?
I, I'm just going to give you my, my opinion. I, I don't think this is something that we would do right now. I think it would be a more of a summertime exercise. I don't think you, all of a sudden, you change up.
I guess what I'm saying is, I understand the idea that, because I, we went to that practice with the DPW, and I think it makes sense sometimes to make sure that we're, that we're getting bang for our buck, I understand that. I'm just saying that with the ambulance service, though, if it, if it's, if it's a generator of cash, I don't know, I mean, honestly, I'm not sure what, what you would go out, how, why you would go out for bid for that. If they had specifics that they were, you know, or specific ones, I mean, obviously, I think they should let us know, and maybe they can give it to you at the next meeting. But, I mean, I'm just saying, as far as the ambulance fund, we're producing money into the general fund, it's, it's a cash generator. I mean, I, I don't, I don't.
And it is in other locations.
Yeah.
We just don't know how much it could be here.
Yeah, and so.
Or if it could be at all.
And I, I would expect, well, you're in Man, I mean, well, maybe you have the answer, I mean, in Manchester, when they use the private ambulance service, does that else, does, is that just a service they provide, or do they also provide that service and generate cash to the city of Manchester?
They're paying us three hundred and sixty thousand next year.
Is that for dispatch services, though?
Correct. That's, well, because of the anti-kickback federal laws, you cannot charge for medical calls. The only thing you can ask for is reimbursement, so you would have to, in this case, calculate the percentage of dispatches that are medical, then compare that to your salaries and dispatch, and then you could ask for reimbursement of those costs.
And, would it be fair to say that when you privatize ambulance services, the fees to your residents increases above and beyond what we're charging now?
I, I couldn't answer, that's all set by, in Manchester, it's set by the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
I think that's, that's one of the, all depends. I mean, I think intuitively, I think we're probably doing it at a very price competitive, you know, spot there, but, doing our, I don't think it hurts to, to occasionally do due diligence and, and to price it out, and look at the pros and cons. I, I don't, I don't see any, any harm in, in doing that periodically, and, and doing it at a time of, of year when, not during budget season, obviously, but do it, you know, when it's rather, when the, when the time is, is, is better to, to do that. And I know we did it, I'm, I'm pretty sure we did this thing five years ago.
We've done it several times, I don't remember the last time.
Right. But again, it's that, one, you know, you, every five, if, if every five years, you're taking the pulse to say, does, you know, does it make sense or not, then I think that. Yes, Phil?
When we originally accepted the money from JEMSA and established the fund, that was one of the things that we also did. We also looked at privatization of the ambulance. And there were two or three companies at the time that were looked at, and it did, you have to, you have to remember that, when JEMSA had this, there was no charge for the ambulance. It worked strictly on donation. Okay? So, there were many people who, who donated, that local residents, and one of the things that started happening is the amount of calls that were being used for motor vehicle, that, that resulted in people outside, non-residents, or outside of town, or outside of the state, well, you, you didn't get, you didn't get, seldom did you get a donation from them. I mean, they never got a bill, and seldom did we get a check as a donation. Sometimes people realized that they found out, however they found out that it was, that there was no charge, they were surprised, and they said, you know, they might have been told, well, well, we work strictly by donation, and they may have sent a, a check in. But, when, when they, JEMSA was tracking this, that was one of, that was one of the reasons why what they were getting was, it was getting tougher for them to get donations. Not that people, the residents weren't donating, but the calls for service were being used by non-residents that weren't making donations.
I, I would like to get a motion on this one, to, to direct the fire chief to conduct a, a study on ambulance, and maybe with a timeframe of, what do you think, next, next June? Is that? That gives us, that would be before, we go into a next budget cycle, and is that, is that enough time, you believe?
Is that a study that would be best done by the fire department or by an outside consultant?
Oh, you have to, 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 to get independent?
Independent, who's looking at how it could be set up based on a knowledge of many, many communities.
That's an interesting point, because LGC might have some resources there, because we've done different studies before, and maybe to have like an ad hoc committee of some citizens, and maybe a budget committee member, and they can.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the.
Right, but that's, the, let's talk to the fire chief first.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the expertise in-house and all our staff to correctly put together a proposal.
Well, let's do this. Nick, could you talk to Chief O'Brien, and, and let's maybe get some, a feel as to, if we were to proceed with this, are there any outside resources that we could use, LGC or others, that can help us with this? And also, maybe, what are his thoughts on maybe having like a small ad hoc committee of some citizens, and budget committee member, et cetera, to, to try to, to go through the exercise?
There, there, I think there are additional questions that you need to answer, is, are we going to run, are we looking at an ambulance provision similar to what we have now?
Yes.
Will the firefighters be providing EMS during the day, Monday through Sunday?
I think we have to, we have to, we have to compare apples to apples as best we can, so.
So we're looking for an ambulance service to come in and give us one ambulance only at night?
Right, because during the day, we have our full-time firefighters.
And they would only receive the revenue for those calls?
Right. And then, and then I would also say that.
You're saying we would have these ambulances there, and we would use a service at night while our ambulance sat dormant? Is that my understanding what you're just saying here?
That, that doesn't make sense.
Is that, I just want to make sure I got that one clear. We're saying that we're looking for a pricing structure of an ambulance service at night, but yet, we're going to have ambulances here, and they're going to be sitting there. I just want to make sure I got that clear.
Okay. There are, there are, rather than, you know, we have an appointment at six-thirty, so, rather than, we'll, we'll table this for next week, I, I do, I just did, I wanted to get that out, because it came from, from the budget committee, I think it's a fair request, and it's something that typically you do, you check the price to make sure that you're doing something right, and I don't think it's, now, how we try to arrive at comparing what we provide now, to try to, that's something that we have to, to work on, and we want to have that discussion here.
Can we do one other thing too, then, if we're going to do that for Monday, next Monday, is that what you're saying? When was the, when was the twenty-four-seven, was that three years ago?
More than that.
Was it three or four?
Four, 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 maybe five.
Two thousand and sixty, two thousand and six.
Yeah, yeah, fourth year.
Whole consolidation, twenty-four-seven.
If we get a copy of that, too.
Can we continue this later on this evening?
We can either do it later this evening, or we'll do it on time.
Let's get a copy of what it was on, on that last one, that's what I want to say.
Okay, alright, I apologize to the Economic Development Council, some of them are here. We are going to have a presentation by Derek Horn and the EDC with regard to Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive. And I will move.
Kind of make sure you have that microphone close.
Yes, I've been scolded many a time lately.
Andrew, keep us on our toes. Maybe disappears.
He's returning a phone call.
Thank, thank you for allowing myself and the EDC to present tonight. Back in June, the EDC came before you to present the idea of exploring the AER Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, which is two thousand and six.
No, I think it's out of focus, it's, it may, or it could be my eyes.
Do you want some glasses?
Well.
It's out of focus.
That's the best that I can do, I apologize. About having the EDC explore the possibility of going to town meeting and trying to get authorization for the Board of Selectmen to use this tax relief incentive. A quick overview, just a reminder of what the, the incentive does allow, if authorized at town meeting. It allows the selectmen to grant temporary tax relief for projects that are deemed a public benefit, when you're substantially rehab, rehabilitating an existing structure. If the selectmen choose to authorize that tax relief, during the tax relief period, the assessment shall not increase as a result of the substantial rehabilitation. And at the end of the tax relief period, the building is then taxed at full value. And the tax relief period is dependent on a number of different, a number of different factors. One is the type of project that is being proposed, and then also the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. So the EDC met numerous times to discuss the different areas to designate, and at length, they discussed, we discussed the Grassmere area, Pannardville and Village, and decided that it was best to opt for two focused areas. And the EDC is recommending to the selectmen that there be two separate warrant articles, one for Pannardville, and there's a brief description of where the properties are, I do have maps. And then also in the Village District, focusing on established commercial properties, and the downtowns and village centers, which is really the focus of this enabling legislation. The Pannardville area, it's a little difficult to see here, but it, it is from Moose Club Park, right next to the Shaw's Plaza, along Mast Road down to the border of Manchester. And it's, for the most part, it is all commercial, commercially zoned properties, residential small business office, and industrial properties. There are a few residential properties next to the Firehouse, and there are a few exceptions that are left out, but for the most part, those are residential, or the Saret Industri, or Saret Recreational Complex. And then in the Village area, the EDC is recommending that the second warrant article be simply for Village Commercial District. Everything that's shown in the red box there, centered in the Village. And we felt that it was best to focus the area for this first time, and if there were applicants that came forward and took advantage of this tax incentive, it would show, show us how, how it was being used, but also, it could serve as an example if you were going to expand in some of the small mixed-use districts. Here, you see the RSBO one, which is residential and small business offices. So there's a mixed use that if you had enough people take advantage of it, you could potentially expand into those districts in the future. If the Board of Selectmen would like to go forward with this, there would need to be some public outreach before the town meeting in March, and what we've proposed is to educate as many people as possible. The Main Street program has already endorsed the adoption, and has talked about working with the EDC members to get the word out to people on the Main Street, which is one of the proposed districts. We have already started discussing filming informational programs for the community television and online applications, and then also talking with community organizations, just again, and potentially property owners, to inform them.
Could you go back to those maps one more time?
Yeah.
Alright, so, along, let's just say where Magoo's is, along there, that, 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 that's not on there.
It is not on there. That is, we didn't feel that was a downtown or village center, which is what this is really designed for. This legislation was designed for avoiding sprawl and to inbuild around existing structures that need rehabilitation. Although, there, there are some structures there, we felt that was more designed to, you know, to develop the properties rather than kind of piecemeal and go in and, and fix what's already there, but to do a broader development.
Question?
Yes, Nick.
Eric, is there a requirement that we define a geographic area, or can we adopt this statute and on a case-by-case basis determine if it is within an area that meets the definition?
The legislation, and it should have been in your packets, it had a, it, you can have a downtown area as defined by your master plan, or zoning, and then you'd have to go in and, before you determine, you'd have to make a determination, it's based on the master plan and zoning, is this within our downtown area? And the EDC in this case, based on the direction from the Board of Selectmen, chose to propose some designated areas. But that would be another option, is to seek authorization for this, for this program from, from the voters, and just say that at the time of application, the Board of Selectmen would make that determination.
Alright, so, let's just say that I am a property owner hypothetically, I am not, but hypothetically if I was, and I have a structure that is in not-so-great shape, it's unoccupied, and it's assessed at, say, a hundred thousand dollars. Do I have to rehabilitate that structure, or can I tear it down and start from scratch?
There is a provision that you can replace the structure.
Okay.
The, the, there is a few more steps involved. You do need to submit additional reports from the Division of Historical Resources, request input from the Historic District Commission, and you have to prove a greater public benefit than rehabilitating an existing structure. But there is a provision that you could do replacement, yes. And if adopted, the application process would most likely be submitted and controlled through the assessing office, as it is a tax relief incentive, and it requires a tracking once that tax relief period is adopted. We envision, talking with Scott Bartlett, the assessor, that there'd be multiple departments involved, including planning, economic development, Building Department, Fire Department, as well as assessing. And with cooperation with the, the Board of Selectmen's office, make sure the application is complete and notice it for public hearing, and then it would go before the Board of Selectmen. And then, if it's approved, then it would be tracked through the assess, assessor's office.
The statute that gives the Board of Selectmen the latitude to determine the, the timeframe, as well as, is that not correct? It could be up to five years?
It's up to five years, and then there.
The Board, the Board of Selectmen at the time can pick one year, three years, five years, whatever they want.
Correct.
On each, on the merits of each project.
Correct, and then there are bonuses if there is housing, if there is affordable housing, and if you use the Department of Interior's for historic renovation standards.
Yes, Phil?
Two questions for Derek, and you're actually, they deal with the assessing, so you might not be able to, I might have to check with Scott Bartlett on it. In a previous slide, you should have, it stated, shall not, shall not was underlined as far as the increased assessment due to the improvements that are. as the increased assessment due to the improvements that are made underneath this. And just for clarification, if I had a property, let's say that was paying $15,000, and the assessment, let's say they didn't go through this process and they just remained the way they were, let's say they were going up that their taxes, it's a commercial property, so let's say the tax assessment will go up by, let's say, $200, or, well, let's say $500. So we're talking about the portion that's being improved on here, not the portion, I mean, and the reason why I'm asking this, just for clarification, because on the slide it said shall not, and the shall not was underlined. It does not mean that your property valuation and your taxes are not going to go up. What it means is that the improvement that you make underneath this legislation shall not go up.
It's, I understand what you're asking, and I'll just, and I'll just read from the slide, it's right up, is during the tax relief period, the property tax on a qualifying structure shall not increase as a result of the substantial rehabilitation. I understand, that could be read two ways. People can see, okay, I'm going to get the same exact tax bill every year. The way I read that is, the property is, was assessed pre-rehabilitation. If your tax rate increases, you're going to see an increase on that portion, you're just not going to realize for those, that rehabilitation.
Yeah, just to add, directly from the RSA, it's talking about the different criteria, and, the property tax on a replacement structure shall not exceed the property tax on the replaced qualifying structure as a result of the replacement. So it seems, suggests that it speaks to the portion due to the improvement or replacement as opposed to the natural.
Exactly. Right, so, so the key here is that if there is someone who takes part in this, if they were assessed at, again, at $100,000 and they make improvements, it does not necessarily mean that it's going to stay at $100,000 for up to five years. It may incrementally go up from 100, as it normally would have had they not rehabilitated it, that's the key.
Right. And the other question was, and again, I don't know how the legislation addresses this, but let's say it's granted that property's going to be demolished. So let's say, again, the example that I use, let's say it's a commercial property or, and there's a $15,000 tax bill based. So they go through the process, and it's approved that the property's going to be demolished. The property gets demolished mid-March, comes April 1st, there's no property on there, our taxation works as of how the property is April 1st, so now there's no structure on there, they're only paying the land value, they're not paying the structure value. I mean, is there anything in there, so, there's like a double benefit, they're getting the benefit by not, by the rehab, but they also got the benefit because they demolished the building, and there was no structure on April 1st?
All the tax relief period starts with the, once the work is finished. So there might be an interim if you demolish a structure, you might go a period where you're not paying taxes, because on April 1st, there was no building. Once that replacement is there, then you're playing kind of under the old rules of what was it assessed at before you replaced it, is the way I understand it.
Just to add, I would think too, again, I mean, each application is going to be different, so conceivably, you know, we could explore that on a case-by-case basis, so if the guy's coming in, that could be taken into consideration with the application, I would think.
You mentioned something about scoring. Is there a scorecard that communities are using to assist selectmen in making this decision in terms of, one of the things that I always get concerned at is, about is, you know, does a project become politicized, in the sense that you have an owner of a property who is looked upon favorably, and another property owner who's in the same boat, who may not be the best neighbor in town? But if you're using clearly objective criteria for how you're going to judge something, I think that takes, it's a better way than just, you know, an application. So I guess, can you go into that a little bit more as to, you know, let's say we get three or four of these things over a three- or four-year period, how are we going to make sure that each of those three or four applicants is being treated fairly by whatever Board of Selectmen is there at the time?
I think what you'd have to do is develop a policy, and the RSA does allow that the governing body can make, set policy for what a public benefit is. Right now, the RSA has four bullets, that these are what public benefit is, but the governing body can go further and define that further. Otherwise, I think you'd be looking to staff to make recommendations of whether or not it's a public benefit. So I guess it'd really be whatever your, whatever your, how you'd like to go about it. Do you want to set that policy ahead of time, which is an option for you, or to go a little bit more informal and rely on staff? I guess it'd be however you'd want to-
Only speaking for myself, I would like to see, you know, a policy where there are objective factors that are considered, so that each applicant is treated, you know, the same, and whether or not it's aesthetically going to have a better appearance in a community, it will, you know, improve commerce, or those types of, you know, those types of criteria. Again, I can't think of all of them off the top of my head, but if there was some sort of a scorecard, just like we've done different projects, where you make, almost like it's a decision matrix, yeah, this project scored very highly in this category, this category this scored, this category didn't score so favorably here, but overall, this is a pretty good project. Consequently, you may have those, say, 10 criteria, and it doesn't score all that well. Then you can at least go to the applicant and say, the reasons why we are declining it here is because we set these 10 criteria, and it did not score well when staff and the Board of Selectmen looked at it. And then we can at least give them a reason why, you know, we didn't do it. I would surmise that if you, if you have someone that's a qualifying structure, and you leave it to a Board of Selectmen, and we say, no, we're not interested in this one, then you leave yourself up to, you know, equity, you know, fairness and equity issues, which I think having those objective criteria, you know, will soften that to a degree.
Another one, I mean, going back to the four things that the RSA talks about that Derek mentioned, it does list them in general terms, but you could almost kind of quantify them. The first one, for instance, says, the project, it enhances the economic vitality of the downtown. If you could quantify that somehow, say, you know, it's going to retain or increase X percent of the jobs in the Village area, or in Pannardville, or something to that effect, it could help, you know, a 10% increase, or something like that. You could then do that. So I think maybe just by looking at what they give us, you know, through the course of whatever, we can quantify these numerically somehow, and it may be a way to do it.
I just want to point out, from the same thing that he was just referring to, it's general, it gives you flexibility. I would caution against putting yourself in a box, where your criteria is so much that now the areas don't qualify, because none of them are meeting that criteria anymore. So I would like to, I would think you'd like to try to keep it general to the four items that are on here, and then look as they come forward. Each project is going to be on its own merits, and it has to have some sort of ability to increase the vitality of the downtown area, or the area that's designated. So I'd be cautious about putting too many codes to it.
One of the things that I always have a concern is, whenever you have a new piece of legislation, is the lawsuit. And I think if we have a fair and consistent process, and again, not boxing ourselves in, but, because I could, I would suspect that if there is a landowner or a property owner who has, who wants to qualify for this, and for some reason, the Board of Selectmen approves one but disapproves of another one, just like we get sued on other things, they could come back saying, you did not treat me fairly, I want to appeal, I want to take you to court, because you didn't follow, you know, the law. So having a process or a policy, I think, helps us, and I think maybe LGC can at least give us some guidance there.
If I could just, I'll just answer that quickly, but then, the RSA does address that, and they can go to Superior Court.
Right.
But they have, our decision is basically deemed discretionary, and we'd have, they'd have to show bad faith or discrimination to win that. But the second thing I was going to ask, are we in like a discussion mode here, or do we want to let the presentation finish, and then we'll discuss it?
I was actually finished with my, that was the last slide, I've been kind of jumping around as people have been-
I just wanted to point out, it says, at least one of those public benefits. That doesn't mean you have to have all four. So a scorecard might be dangerous.
It's not a full criteria list.
Can I make a comment? I think they are fairly lenient and open. Look at number one, enhances the economic vitality of the downtown. I mean, you can take a project, and you can just, all you need to do is list a couple of that, and how it meets it, and it would meet that criteria.
Maybe, Matt, can you speak just a little bit historically? I mean, I don't think it's something that you're going to see a lot of people take part in, so if you want to speak it, if you could.
I mean, I've heard of, the only community that I've heard that's actually had people use it is Manchester, and I haven't heard, you know, any other community since then. Not to say that towns haven't put it in place, you know, and they're waiting for somebody to come and utilize it, but you may go a few years and get one, and go a few more years and maybe get one or two, so it may not necessarily be a competitive aspect, but not a lot of people-
Possible to get some examples of those uses in Manchester, before and after, and-
Yes, I believe when we came in June, we did have some numbers from the Pandora Mill that was being, that took advantage of this, but we could get more concrete, absolutely.
And that's a pretty clear improvement, you know, from an abandoned mill to now a viable commercial center. And the other, Steve?
Would it be, I mean, would it, having spoken when I was on the committee, would it be fair to say that it's a tool in the toolkit to help, to help with revocation of these areas, but you're not going to, there won't be a floodgate opening here?
Yeah, this is not going to be the only, the only layer. You have to layer things upon each other, and this is just another layer in certain parts of town that might be this, plus, you know, whether it's an ERZ zone, or some other benefit, might be the tipping point.
I had one question before I get to you, David. What is the Board's sentiment about this? I'm just curious to kind of get a straw poll here.
On the two areas proposed?
On the two areas that have been proposed, is it, Steve, favorable?
Well, I knew, I obviously, I'm very favorable in how they drew out the areas. I think one of the questions we had was Grassmere at one point, then we, you know, they weren't trying to separate out Grassmere because of any reason, but we felt that those two areas between Goffstown and Pannardville were most centralized and fit the need of this, so I'm very, I think it's a positive step.
I think this is a very positive step. I'm not quite sure of the reasoning for two warrant articles versus one versus just adopting the RSA and not specifically identifying-
Yeah, Al, you can address that?
I can. One of the things we looked at was, when we tried to put in, on Mass Road, we tried to put that TIF district, and we had a lot of, we had the people, the first time we did it, it just went down in flames. The second time we did it, we had the people, the neighbors on board with it, but for some reason, people just couldn't understand how it was going to work, and they voted it down. So what we decided to do this time is, is to try to set up a couple of sections and do two separate articles, because if one gets defeated in one area, it may get approved in another, and at least it gives us a foothold to get started. If you put it all together and it gets defeated, you're starting all over again. So we were trying to pick two pieces to get started with, in the hopes that at least one of the two would get picked, if not both, and make it easier for us to be able to sell this to the public as something that's viable and good for the town. So that's the reason why we went with two, but two separate articles.
I'm just thinking along the lines of, when you, when you look at all these properties that are listed in both of those areas, you may have people saying, well, we're in the middle of, I mean, on one hand, we're talking about the budget cuts, and now on the other hand, we're taking large portions, two large portions of the town, and saying, okay, if these are improved, we're not going to see any tax improvement for X number of years, versus just saying, we're going to limit, in a very abstract way, this RSA will allow us to target properties that can help revitalize dense, compact areas, downtown areas, and leave it at that. I mean, we still have to do the same job in explaining it and showing the benefits of it. I don't think we can compare it to the TIF district, because that had its own host of issues besides where it was. But that, just for me, I don't like pitting two different areas of town for a town vote.
No, and I think that's definitely an option, and I think what the EDC, what we tried to do is what, we were tasked to look at where those designated areas. We didn't look at that as an option, but it definitely, it is-
No means no. And if you have the ability to target, you may have a very good property in the Pannardville area, but because it got voted down, we now can't do it. Versus if it's just that generalized, we're going to look at it by the master plan, we're going to look at it according to this criteria-
Are you proposing not designating an area?
Correct. That's an option.
Or to lump them together. I mean, one of the issues, I'm going to go around, I just want to take everybody in order, because David was patient, I appreciate that. Then I've got John, then you, Al.
Summarize again for me, who on the town staff would be involved in putting the staff recommendation together?
It would be the assessor, because it involves the assessment of the property and making sure that that's up to date. The, I would say, the economic development coordinator would also be involved, and the building inspector, because they need to verify that, how much that rehabilitation, if it is on point. You may also involve probably the planner, depending on any planning aspects.
My follow-up question then is, you may have already answered this, would this be an undue workload on that existing staff? I'm going to probably answer it myself. Initially, no, because Matt said you might see one structure a year, especially early on, so that's not an undue workload.
Yeah, you know, I can't really talk for Scott and what, the assessor and what his, but I think from-
I can see our town administrator asking for another position, but it was undue workload.
Or land use software.
All right, I'm going to try to keep on track here. John, you had a comment?
Thanks, yeah. This legislation was brought about to prevent sprawl and to increase property values of existing properties, basically, to do, through rehab. I tend to believe that a free market and a market will tell the owners of these properties when it's time to do rehab on them. And I think that for government to actually come in and to offer a way for property become, to become assessed higher without actually having a market value of it necessarily increase, is something that I think you ought to just, it needs to be clear to these people, because you may be, you're dealing with the private sector out here, that, that, why would they want to spend this much money only to gain a much larger tax bill? And I think in the fairness of economic development, not that this is a bad idea, I just think that it's not, I think it is something that you really should look at much closer than what it appears to be. I just think the, I think the market itself will tell them, will tell the individual when it's time to rehab their own property.
So, just so you can clarify, are you saying you're not in favor for this?
I'm like a 50/50 in favor of this. I mean, it's not that I think it's a bad, I mean, we could have it, it's a tool in the toolbox, and I can accept that part of it. To be a great tool, I'm not sure, only because this, the purpose of this is really to tell somebody, spend a lot of money, rehab your property, and in five years, we're going to give you a much higher tax bill. If you really want incentives for businesses to prosper in town, I think they need real tax relief now, rather than what this legislation brings. So it's not a bad idea, it's just, it's just something that, honestly, I'm a 50/50 on it.
Al?
I'm going to hold back on comment on that one. I don't, I want to just say this, we were given a task from the Board of Selectmen to come up with zone, and to look at what we thought would work. We've done that. Should you decide not to have a zone, or have one article, that's entirely your prerogative, and that's where it lies, is with you folks. So whatever you decide to do, that's why we're here tonight, is once you make that decision, we will go out and we will sell that decision to the public. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
All right. Is there any other, Matt?
I just want to point out, if everybody in your handout- I just wanna point out, if everybody in your handout looks at page five, it's this page here, it's the, the front of the RSA, the very bottom here, under seventy-nine E two, Roman numeral one, it says qualifying structure means a building located in a district officially designated in a municipality's master plan by zoning ordinance as a downtown, a town center, central business district, village center, or where no such designation has been made in a geographic area which, as a result of its compact development patterns and uses, is identified by the governing body as downtown, town center, village, or village center for the purposes of chapters. So I think we have to actually pick and say, you know, these areas in particular. I think that's what, that's telling us, is we actually have to do a designation.
Orders, turn that. I think what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll defer making a decision on this until we maybe have a discussion on it later on as we do have a appointment now. I will say that, I didn't get a chance to kind of go around the room for that, for that straw poll, it kind of stopped at me, but I, I'm, I'm in favor of this for, on a variety of reasons. I, I take a look at downtown Manchester as a prime example. Yes, I think the market drives things, but every once in a while, there's a catalyst. And this is a tool to, to serve as a catalyst. And, you know, folks, I know that the Verizon wireless arena was a controversial issue at the time and there were people saying, should we expend public monies or, you know, the bonds that were needed for that? And I think by all accounts, the revitalization of the downtown area was due to taking that type of, of chance. And then it, it almost incentivized the market to kind of, to jump into it. So I think this kind of does the same thing. It, if, if there's a property owner that's on the fence, it gives them that, maybe that, okay, I think most people know that if they're gonna invest a half a million dollars to rehab a building and that their taxes are gonna go up X amount in the future, they kind of know that, but in that five-year period, that might help them on their financing costs or, you know, on their cash flow, et cetera. And it's, it's just, you know, it's just, it just helps them maybe, encourages them to, to do something. And, and if anything, there's, I bet you there are probably some business owners out there right now that's saying, man, I wish we had that, even if I wasn't in this zone because I, I would be able to, you know, rehab my business for a hundred thousand dollars if I knew that I didn't have to pay taxes on it, I'd be willing to do that, you know? So that, that's my, my take on it. David?
I'm in favor of the proposal as it stands. And truth in lending, I wanna divulge that I am a property owner in one of those zones. However, it's less than a fifth of an acre, there's no structure on it, and it's deemed non-developable. And even if it was merged with its adjoining neighbors, it's non-developable. So I will continue to participate in this discussion.
Phil?
I, I think, I, I'm looking on it favorable and I understand some of the comments that were made and, you know, we always are asked, what can we do to increase economic development? And this, this is, this is a, a tool that I think that many people in this economy are on the fence with, you know, I really need to expand, this needs to get done, but if I do that, I need to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need another employee or two employees. And this is something where it, it, it's very possible that it gives that person that incentive that now that the taxes aren't gonna go up, I can take that money, defer that money instead of paying, putting it into an increase in a tax now, it's gonna be deferred for five years, I might be able to create a job or two. And creating a job or two in the Village or Penarville, there's a very good chance that it's gonna be somebody from Goffstown that could get that job.
I don't wanna belabor that, but I guess the questions that I have, it's fairly clear when you use an example of an abandoned building that's now renovated, revitalized, and put into the tax rolls as a functioning building. Well, let's take a, an apartment building owner. And the apartment building has five living units in it and they wanna go through and rehab the entire structure, new siding, make it look nice, but they're still gonna end up with the same five building units. Would a building like that or a project like that qualify?
Going right to the bottom there of seventy-nine E seven, those four things that Derek talked about, it increases the residential housing in urban or town centers.
You have increased, if it, if, in other words, if it had five and it ends up with five and...
It's not increasing.
It's not increasing. All right. That, that's the areas that the gray areas where you have, you know, I mean, we have Factory Street, we have some locations that are vacant. And those are fairly clear, but it's those other ones that, you know...
Robbie, you wanted to, you wanted to make a...
If I could jump in on that, one of the things that you might be able to infer though, that if that apartment house owner makes an improvement to that apartment, that they can then charge higher rents and that goes right back into, into your assessment. So he then, that property owner has more money in his pocket to spend in the, in the, in the whole economic circle of things, which is not to say that you want higher rents and, and move people out because part of it is to include affordable or low mod housing in it. But it, it is that incentive to do the right thing and to make the numbers work. And, and Selectmen Groves, you said, you hit the nail right on the head, is that sometimes the owner wants to do something but can't make the numbers work, can't get that financing because it's too much money. Having this incentive just makes those numbers work a lot of times and that's, that's one of the, the good pieces of it. And as Selectmen Devanza said, it does put people to work. When you rehab a building, you put people to work at a higher rate than if you're building a new one and that, at usually better pay.
All right, just a thank you to Derek, Al.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of work on this.
John, thank you, EDC, for doing this. And I think, you know, in a time when we are talking about, you know, expenses, this is a way that perhaps, you know, five or 10 years from now, we may see some more revenue, you know, due to nicer, better structures, which promotes more business and more people coming to Goffstown. So that's a good thing. Thank you very much and we'll talk about it later on. All right. Next up, we have, we're a little bit behind and this was a, we're gonna be discussing the construction project on South Mast. So I'd like to have Carl and Megan. How are you? All right. First, I just, I wanted to welcome the representatives from Delory Construction who have joined us this evening. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Thank you, Carl and Megan as well. This portion will be dialogue between the Board of Selectmen and DPW staff as well as the representatives from, from Delory. As I said last week, I won't be taking any public comment or questions from the, from the public. This is strictly for, between, a dialogue between the Board, DPW, and Delory Construction. So...
Just slide up if you want?
What? Yeah, you, you could, if you're, if you wanna sit there, that's fine. If you wanna come on up, it's, it's your prerogative. One of the things that I wanted to start off is Carl, we know that there's been a good amount of activity over the, over the weekend and prior to that last week, aside from the two days of rain that we had. Can you just give us kind of, give us in the community kind of an update as to where the project stands?
Yeah, let me, let me start just by introducing the rest of the project team too.
Sure.
We also have, well, from Delory, Dave Delory, Ron Amadon, Chris Ryder, and Tom Mamon there, the various levels of management, all the way up to the owner of the company that, that came tonight to talk to you folks. And right behind them are the engineers from McFarland Johnson. You've seen them here several times during design. So we just, we wanted to have the whole, kind of the whole team here and answer any questions that come up. As you, as you, as you referenced, Scott, the last couple of weeks, Delory has been working feverishly to try to get the work done. What we're focusing on right now is critical work and when I say critical work, obviously winter is coming and we have to maintain South Mast and paving, particularly the finished paving, which is kind of the stages we're at, are very temperature dependent. So it's, it's not only a time-sensitive issue, but it's a weather-sensitive issue. We're right on that window of the door closing for the winter on being able to get these, these sensitive pavements down. Obviously, this time of year, we're very, days are shorter, we're, the, the weather window's closing and when you get days like, like the rainy days of the, in the last weekend today, that certainly doesn't help. And as, as the board has kind of experienced over the last year or two, these projects are very task-dependent on each other, you know? Everything kind of follows in a linear sequence. So when, when your rain interrupts curving installation, then that interrupts the finished paving that follows and that interrupts something else. So these guys, every time that happens, they have to jump on the phone and try to juggle not just their own schedule, but three or four different subcontractors that are all lined in behind them.
And if I could, I just wanna, I had a conversation with the Goffstown News with regard to that and the Goffstown News editor was unaware that subcontractors were being used. And there may be a lot of people in the community who don't understand how the construction process works, but a general contractor is hired, the general contractor does some work, presumably that, that they can do with their own crew, and then they hire subcontractors to do more specialty work, which they farm out to various companies. Those subcontractors work for, they're independently owned and they do a lot of work for many other general contractors on different projects. And as you said, there is a sequence in which these subcontractors have lined up their work. So whether it's a weather delay, a delay in getting a material, a boo-boo in installing something wrong, every time there's some little setback, that could set back a subcontractor and then that sets back another subcontractor and it kind of snowballs. So that's why people always wonder why our construction projects always seem to be delayed because whether it be weather or a, a wrong material delivered or a mechanical breakdown of equipment, all these things can have a snowball effect. And I try to explain it to the Goffstown News in the sense of using like a home as an example. If you're doing like a bathroom or a kitchen remodel and you need a plumber to come in and then dependent upon that is your electrician, dependent upon that is your cabinet installer and then it's a countertop and then a painter and a, you know, then your person who's doing some drapes or whatever, everything is all in sequence and, and if one person can't make it because they're sick or, or the materials didn't show up, it was the wrong material, it then sets everybody else back. And having experienced that myself through a variety of different projects, I kind of understand that. This one, I think, has taken, it's been a lot of that and I think there's been, you know, because it's a main road, there's been a lot of frustration. We as a community really are not accustomed to Boston-like traffic, shall we say, although I don't think it was quite Boston-like, but I, I don't think our community is kind of used to that. We only have two roads, two primary roads and it, it just got exacerbated, I guess, because of that. So I just wanted to clarify the fact that it is a GC, the GC's hire subcontractors and there's a, you know, it's, it's complicated, but...
Well, and, and, you know, I'll let, I'll let it play out as far as, you know, how we address what got us to this point, but, you know, I remember when we did the other roundabout in, in Grassmere, I can remember we threw around the phrase that it was like changing the carpeting in the middle of a Super Bowl party and that was on, that was in Grassmere, you know? And I knew going into this project that tackling the intersection of South Mast and Wallace was just not gonna be a picnic. I mean, it's, there's just no good way to handle that much traffic through such a small area while you're trying to rebuild it. That being said, you know, we, we had a lot of challenges on this project. I think the, the paperwork aspect, you know, let's not forget that what brought this whole project to the, to the forefront so quickly was the fact that 50% of the money was coming through the federal IRA program. The paperwork involved in that, I think, kind of took us all by surprise. It was, you know, certified payrolls and not only Delory's payroll and Delory staff, but each and every subcontractor that works for Delory has to provide Delory with certified payrolls. So that tends to slow down the whole paperwork and the invoicing and which, you know, as we've learned over the last couple of weeks, leads to cash flow issues for all these subcontractors who might be out a month or two months or whatever on, on getting their money in. So there's just been a lot of compounding influences on this project.
Just a quick question, Carl, was the certified payrolls and that payroll was, and that paperwork, was that something that we discovered afterwards or was that spelled out in the contract?
Oh, no, it was spelled out in the contract and it was made very clear. I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it sound like it was a big secret. There were two big, big provisions of IRA that we all knew going in and that was Davis Bacon Wages and Buy American were the two clauses.
Didn't we contract for oversight just for that reason, to handle all of that paperwork?
And that, that's really the rule McFarland Johnson has, has built. The only point I'm trying to...
Where was the breakdown then?
Well, the, the point I'm trying to make is there was just a lot of paper flow and, you know, what, I'm not saying that was the only factor, but, you know, we've, we've been dealing with trying to catch up on this couple of months backlog of invoices, which has, has kind of led to some of the snowball effect. And I think that at the heart of all of that is just the paperwork. One, one thing that's different with, with these IRA projects and any other time we've done the Davis Bacon contract is, you know, the governor's office took this so seriously that they actually appointed somebody whose sole job it is, is to oversee this, this certified payroll and certified, they didn't wanna go back with all of these projects and recreate the wheel later. So we really can't even process a payment without each and every piece of paper in the file at the time we process it, which is, in, you know, is a good thing. I'm not saying that's not a good thing, it's a, it's a real good thing, but it's a lot of paperwork to chase down, especially on a big, complex project like this.
All right, I, I'm gonna just kind of try to frame this to try to give you a recap of, I, I was at a meeting with DPW staff and Delory and a lot of issues came out that was made, Delory had mentioned some issues and we, we addressed some issues and I think it's important for the public to try to get a handle of what some of these issues were. There was a couple of things. You mentioned payroll and in the, in the bidding process, I was told during that meeting that there were two sets of wages and, and unbeknownst to either the town or to the contractor, the, the government messed up. And, and when this thing was originally put out to bid, it was at a, a wage that was not, you said, you told me it was heavy versus regular, basically it's...
Yeah, highway or heavy.
Highway or heavy. And it was originally highway, it should have been deemed heavy. Then that kind of screwed things up, shall we say, then it had to get readjusted, right? Delory had to readjust in order to do that. Okay. Now, so we, we know that there were obviously the complexities of, of a government project that, that made it a little bit more unusual than just a simple town project. So we start the project, we were under the, the community, under the impression that we would have substantial completion, I think that was the words, the term that was used of the roundabout prior to school starting. A lot of progress was made on that roundabout, but as we all know, there was not substantial completion of it. And then I just wanna, this is where we're gonna get, get things straight here. The board was told that there was some issues with cobblestone and that the incorrect cobblestone was ordered, it was a custom-made cobblestone and therefore it would take some time to get that made and that would set us back, at the time I believe you said, four to five weeks. In my meeting, a couple of weeks ago, Delory said that there were some design issues, that although the project was substantially designed, that there were some, some delays in final design, there were some issues with water lines. We thought a water line was in one spot based upon the water precinct and it wasn't and then that something had to get redesigned and there were changes made that were out of their control. I was also, discussed at that meeting where we did some tip downs, I guess for ADA, those, those, I guess, those slopes were not correct, those had to get, those are in the process of getting, you know, redone. In addition to that, the town made a couple of change orders. One of them was a change order on reclaiming a portion of Mast Road. The reason why the, based upon your recommendation, which the board unanimously agreed to, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to have a trench cut right in the middle of South Mast. So we decided to reclaim that portion of the road, which I, I believe was a wise decision, but then again, that was something that Delory had to adjust to. The other big issue we had was a, the addition of the drainage on Pine Ridge. And again, if I'm, if I'm misspeaking here, I, I wanna make sure that the record is straight. So... So, um, we had the Pine Ridge drainage. And originally, we wanted that to be included in the project. Um, and there were ARA funds available. However, I believe it was Plymouth, was that the town?
Right.
Plymouth had applied for these ARA funds, they were awarded the ARA funds. Shortly thereafter, there was another grant opportunity for the town, the city or town of Plymouth. Um, but what happened was those funds were already secured for Plymouth. So until Plymouth had their other funds, we couldn't get ahold of the ARA funds, which was fifty percent of that project. We were patiently waiting and waiting and waiting. Finally, the board made a decision to proceed, knowing that we had incredibly good odds of getting that grant. So we gave Delory a change order to start work on that project. So there were, you know, some things that I think went, uh, you know, additional things were put on their plate, slowed them down to a degree. There were some engineering issues. On the flip side of it, um, I have to say candidly, the traffic control, um, on, on your end was a little rough. I mean, I almost saw the police chief and some old lady go on a head-on, he wasn't too happy about that. Um, and I think we've had some snafu's there. Um, and just, you know, we had a lot of gaps, you know, in terms of, there was like a, I think it was a four or five week period where really not a whole lot went on. Um, we thought that, we thought it would have gone just quicker, you know, than it did. That being said, um, I think we're pretty darn close to wrapping this thing up. The pace has certainly, uh, quickened. Um, mother nature is cooperating with us in terms of the, the paving schedule. One of the things that, you know, with that pervious pavement, you know, there are certain weather conditions for that. And that was why we had some expediency and why we wanted to do this was because we really can't be laying down this pavement when it's thirty degrees out. Um, and fortunately for us, uh, we're gonna have fifty and sixty degree temperatures this week. So, uh, the stars have aligned for us, thank goodness. Um, residents, uh, I will speak for some of the residents that are, that are here who have, have had some concerns. Um, hole right in the middle of someone's front yard, no safety measures taken really around it. Um, so that, that, that's a concern. Um, we have some, um, culvert, uh, catch basins that are not really, or I believe it's catch basins, right? That are not really where they should be. Um, and then just the, the issue of, um, you know, on, on the landscaping side, I know we've got some issues, um, with the property owner that have to, that have to get adjusted. So now I, I'm gonna step back and say that, and, and I kind of have a good sense of how these projects go. Um, just even on a personal side from my house, is that I call them the punch list. And no project is ever perfect when it's done. And many times you have to come back and you have to reseed landscaping, do additional plantings, fix the stuff that, um, that, that wasn't done correctly. Um, so we've got some issues. I don't think we'd be, we'd be disingenuous to say that this thing has been a perfect process because we all know that it hasn't. But we're on track to, to complete it. We've got to fix the stuff that's not right. Um, that's not right for the abutting property owners, it's not right for the town's property, which I think we can work, you know, through all those. Um, the other thing that I wanted to try to get out there was, you know, payment. And, and Delory had some issues with the speed in which some of these things were paid. Um, I believe that we met the, the contractual obligations. Although, um, now there's, I guess, a better process in place to speed up the payment, if I'm not mistaken, right? It's a little bit quicker. We had forty-five days to pay bills upon which received. We just got the bills from August and September. That was prior to our meeting last week. We got those, we signed off on them. I assume that you've got your drafts, that you got your payment from last, I would assume?
I, I, we're pretty, you, you've got one in your warrant tonight.
Okay.
That gets us pretty much caught up.
Okay. So I, I think, I think we're, you know, we're, we're good there. Um, you know, there's no doubt that this has been, you know, a frustrating, you know, process as we thought it would be done, you know, two months ago. Um, but I, I think as Selectmen Campasano said last week or two weeks ago, you know, when all is said and done, you know, we can point fingers and point blame at everybody, but we've got to get it right. And we got to get it right.
I said-
Now, you didn't say that, you just said we have to do a-
Oh, okay, then just say what I said. Very profound.
What you said was that we got to take this as a learning experience and do a debrief at the end. And, and to, and to, you know, it's a debrief, you know, it identifies what are the, some of the mistakes that we've made and how do you correct them in the central going in the future.
So when this is all over with-
Right.
We need to do-
A debrief.
A debrief afterwards and identify what went wrong.
So, um, I, I think that's kind of, you know, where we're at. And, um, it, it appears that we're getting close to getting this thing wrapped up. I, I do think that we have to make sure that, um, you know, the people who abut this project are, you know, are made whole in terms of put back to where they were before. Whatever those engineering plans were, whatever those landscaping plans were, that, uh, the contractor and the town honor those. Um, certainly, it's been an inconvenience for the, for the commuters who, who go through. But that's part of life. And I think most people who are, although they've been very frustrated by it, they, they kind of understand that. Um, on, on the flip side of it, um, we've had some pretty bad drainage issues and that's why we did this project in the first place. And, um, if the engineering is right, and hopefully McFarland Johnson, he did the engineering right. Um, next rainstorm, when it, when it rains three or four inches, um, in a twelve-hour period, um, your, your, your garage will not be, uh, inundated with water. So I think hopefully at the end of the day, throughout this, this long and arduous process, we will sit back and say, okay, it, it wasn't, didn't go all so great, but the end result was what we wanted it to be, so.
I, I, I would just, I'll just say that, uh, I've been very amazed just watching, not that we've had three or four inches of rain, but the rains we've had, uh, just how it's all been working has been pretty phenomenal. And it's also helped us find a few rough spots in the, in the grading and the layout. But the, the pervious pavement, just the way it's been working in these storms has been terrific, so, very encouraged by that.
All right, so let's just, um, I think, I think, you know, some of the folks who are in the audience kind of want to hear, okay, we know where we're at right now. When you talk about final pavement, and I'm gonna just, we'll, we'll start from the rock wall and we'll move our way. Um, the rock wall is, is, um, stone wall, I should say.
Yeah, and I'm actually, I'll let the, the guys from Delory kind of step in right here. Cause I mean, I know roughly what the plan is for this week, but, you know, we haven't really gotten the rest-
And if one of you want to, if, if one of you who knows the schedule wants to kind of come up and just, these are the types of things that we're trying to, if you just want to come up.
My name's Tom Maimoni, uh, project manager for Delory Construction, um, starting at the retaining wall, um, at the funeral home. It's currently being built by a retaining wall subcontractor. It's a tedious wall because it's all rock by rock, um, brick by brick. Um, he should be done by the end of this week, hopefully, um, for us to be completed next week with that area. The intent is to complete that area next week.
So that would be curbing and sidewalk goes in front of that rock wall?
Correct. And the wall is really the hardest part of that area. Everything else is just tertiary and, um, really is a two, three-day process.
Okay, so now we're, we're moving down and we know that the, there's pervious pavement and the curb has been set. There needs to be additional pervious pavement laid on the shoulder, correct?
The schedule for the porous pavement is on Wednesday, uh, the curbing contractor is coming back to do the south side of the road, which is the side of the road that does not have a sidewalk. Um, Wednesday we have, let's discuss the project as a whole if that's okay.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Wednesday we have finished pavement going down at the roundabout portion of the project. Finished pavement has been completed on Wallace Road and from Pine Ridge Street, um, to approximately ninety-five South Mass Road. Uh, porous pavement follows the curb installation. Curb installation on the north side of South Mass Road has already occurred. And we're starting to prep sidewalks and back up that curbing so that we can do the porous top coat on that side. With all in-
I'm sorry, what was it, what day were you presuming to do, do that top coat?
Friday.
Friday, thank you.
Friday, we're looking to have fifty-six plus degree weather, um, no rain in sight. Um, that's one of the requirements per respect for the porous pavement. Wednesday, we're gonna do the, uh, final top coat at the roundabout. Friday, we're planning to have all the sidewalks prepped and the porous pavement available to put down. So by the end of the week, um, we should be almost on a punch list status, um, on the South Mass Road portion of the project.
And now, the sidewalk itself, is that, is that porous pavement or is it, it's regular asphalt? And that, that's, that's, I was, is there a different schedule for the porous versus the asphalt?
No, um, we had to wait to do the sidewalks because, um, the sequence of how the sidewalks have to be built is you have to put the curb in and then you have to put the gravel behind the curb and the sidewalks go on top of that.
Okay.
But they'll be done the same day as the porous.
Okay. And then the other big question for those who drive the trailers and the trucks is the cobblestone apron. When is that?
The cobblestones will be installed next week.
Okay, now, when that, I, I guess for, in terms of like traffic, obviously, um, is there a plan to try to do some of the, say, the paving during the middle part of the day? Not during like a rush, you know, not during the morning or the after, or two, two-thirty when school lets out? Because closing that intersection is a problem.
Sorry for cutting you off.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, paving should start around ten AM.
Okay.
Um, nine AM is the first time we're allowed to get on the road, um, due to traffic.
Right.
Generally by nine fifteen, nine thirty, um, it starts really slowing down where it's the least traffic issue-
Gotcha.
-of the day.
And Carl, there's something that, that can kind of get worked out was I know that we have right now these reader boards that say trucks detour around. But is there any way that we can let through the reader boards, if we can have an alternative message saying paving, you know, Wednesday, paving, whatever, whatever day there's paving, because if there's gonna be substantial delays, um, I guess folks would like to know prior to they get to the Shell Station that traffic is backed up. Um, so if, if they could, we can do that, that would help, um, let people know that, that, that they, they may want to take a, a detour. Um, and then my other question is that, do we want to create the same detour that we did, um, during the election day? And that was the mountain road, Merrill Road? Because if, if they're gonna be coming down that way and bearing, and going right up to Wallace, um, then is that a big issue or no?
I was, I was just, I was just smiling myself, Scott. My question, if we're gonna do that detour, is are you gonna be there to help direct the traffic?
What?
Well, it's precessed.
Um, I, I did not get my road scholar, or flag man certificate, um...
Let me, let me pick up on that and put it back on focus here. Uh, cobblestones, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week. It's critical that trucks don't try to go through there dragging their rear, rear ends over the areas where the workmen are working. Um, have we, have we been successful on mandatory truck detours?
Well, we haven't had any mandatory, I don't think.
Well, it's not a hundred percent success. I mean, every time I, I-
It only takes one to break a curb.
True, true. And every time I've seen a truck go through, I grabbed the phone number off the truck and I've called several people since I've been out there. And that's all we can really do. I mean, people, some people are blatantly ignoring the signs and coming through. And I don't know how much we can do short of having a, an officer or, or somebody stationed at those reader boards not allowing anybody through. Um, I mean, most of the truck traffic is being detoured around right now. Um, but we, as we see trucks come through, we're trying to deal with them one by one by contacting the companies.
Well, and just, and guys chime in if I'm wrong, but when, when you're in cobblestones, and my guess is you're gonna use half of the roundabout for traffic, using traffic control. The other half is closed while they're doing the, the cobbles. So even if a truck came through, I mean, in theory, even if they're going the wrong way around the roundabout under traffic control, it's not like they're gonna break anything. They're either gonna be unfinished cobbles or on gravel. At this point, the curbing has been backed up and it's got the concrete behind it to kind of support it and hold it in place. So at this point, through traffic control, you can maneuver around where you're actually laying cobble.
If I can, well, I'll say you were gonna go-
It's, it's maybe not so critical going into the village because the trucks have a better, but it's when they have to come out of the village, it's, the trucks are gonna drag over the cobble area.
Right.
And is it, it's gonna be so critical, is it gonna be worth someone from your staff to be a traffic director back at the village, stopping, making sure trucks go to Elm Street?
Well, let me, let me ask you, I mean, you guys see that as a major?
It doesn't, only takes one truck to ruin what you've put him-
I think we're past that point of, um, it was the curbing that was the biggest issue. And we did have a problem. We set some curbing and that night, I think we had one truck go through when nobody was around and it broke some curbing and we had to reset it. Um, so I think we're past the point of if a, you know, I don't want to say if a truck comes through, it's not a problem because we have a truck to go up for a reason.
I'm trying to make their time on site next week as productive as possible.
I mean, and, and again, we had, you know, alt, an alternate detour route up, I think, at one point. But we took that down because there was less traffic coming through, which affected the businesses. So we're trying to encourage traffic to not affect the businesses, yet we're trying to keep it out of there to limit the traffic. You know, it's, it's, it's a battle either way.
No.
You know, we would prefer nobody to come through there because yes, then we could probably get twice as much done. But that's not a possibility. It's our main thoroughfare and it's open to commuters and businesses and, and we have to deal with that. It's part of the construction. Um, but the trucks, I mean, at this point, the cobbles, uh, they'll work in sections, probably a quarter at a time or something. And we'll be able to, um, maneuver traffic through there. I don't think the idea of a detour up Wallace is a, is a good one because most of the traffic through there, again, is through traffic.
Right.
So to send them up mountain and then down into the intersection anyway where work is gonna be occurring, I don't think is very smart. On the day of voting, um, that was helpful because people came around and then took a right and headed up Wallace. So it worked for that. Um, but I don't think it's necessary at this point to set up that detour for commuting traffic. I mean, it frustrates the commuters to go up and around. It frustrates everyone on, um-
Narrow.
Narrow road, thank you, I was gonna say mountain. It's a very tiny road and I, I'm, PD's not here to support me on that. But, you know, that's not really meant to be a, you know, a detour route for two-way traffic. It's quite narrow through there, so I don't think we want to be concerned about that.
The bottom line is do what you can to make their time on site next week as productive as possible.
Phil, then Steve.
Just a, a question on the detour, uh, coming through the village into the roundabout. Have we detoured or would it be helpful to detour trucks? And I guess I have a concern about possibly loaded eighteen-wheelers with full gravel or sand loads coming down Elm Street, down the back road.
We are doing that right now. We do have a truck detour and all the signage up for trucks coming out of Route thirteen and trucks coming-
Safe to say the gravel, the gravel haulers who make three trips a day, they are, they're compliant.
You know, I don't think we've, I haven't seen a ton of them come through, except for delivering, you know, deliveries.
I, I'm bringing that point up specifically for the timing of when the work is done on the roundabout. I mean, if we need, we need some, something extra, an extra person, even if it's an officer, that it might be conducive and it might be beneficial, just, you know, we're only looking, I, I'm assuming a day, eight hours, ten hours, uh, for that. I mean, if we need to do it, I think it's, we'll have to do it.
The cobbles will go, I think, three days or so, I mean, it'll take a while.
Okay, well, I meant the ti- the, the time that the work is being done.
All right, so I think the thing that we want to get out to the community is that the next two weeks, um, this week and the first part of next, and it's all weather dependent too. So the next two weeks are gonna, you know, we're gonna be going through it, you know, the traffic. And hopefully after that, we're gonna be in a lot better shape. So, um, everybody can have their Thanksgiving turkey, Steve.
Just so I guess I'm, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly regarding the, the wall and the paving, et cetera. Then you talked about doing the cobblestone next week. What will that leave to be done and will that be all, will, will this project be completed this year? Are we coming back next year for portions? I'm, I'm just trying to look for that final end, end date.
The project will be completed by Thanksgiving.
All portions, everything, we're not coming back next year, we're done?
The only portions that will have to come back next year is any rework from landscaping that didn't take over the winter, um, like you typically have with any construction project.
So when we do the cobblestones next week, and hopefully everything works out in the time schedule, what won't be completed then that, that would, that would push us to Thanksgiving?
Um, just small punch list areas, just cleaning up, you know, our staging areas and stockpile areas, demobile, demobilized from the job site.
How about the brick detail on the sidewalk?
All the sidewalks. The sidewalk rework and the bricks, yeah.
The intent is to have the sidewalks and the brick sidewalk completed by middle to end of next week as well. Question?
Does that include the tip-downs?
The handicap ramps?
Right.
Yes.
How are we, how are we addressing those, just, I mean?
They're, they're, one of them's been, they've been jackhammered out.
So it was just, just a tip-down part you had to change, just add section or?
No, the, per ADA requirements, you have to have a two percent or less cross slope on the sidewalks, um, approximately forty to fifty percent on the sidewalks. Um, when a subcontractor poured them, they were about two and a- When a subcontractor poured them, they were about two and a half percent consistently, um, which is literally the result of, um, their form boards being about an eighth of an inch off. And we have to rectify the situation because per ADA requirements, which is a federal requirement, they're not allowed to be greater than two percent, so.
And this is being correct? I take it as we're doing it now because we're saying we'll be done next week then?
Right, yes. And the, it goes pretty fast. We have to remove the sidewalks, which they come out in slabs, and then replace them. But in order to not create a traffic issue for the kids going to school, um, it's gotta happen the next day. So when the form guy comes in to form and pour the sidewalks, we're taking them out the day before, just so it's easier pedestrian access through the area and there's no liability for anybody.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna speak on behalf of, uh, because I told the residents that they're not gonna, they're not taking their public comment, but some of them have shared their concerns with me. The fir, first is, um, resident, obviously, there's, there was an issue, I believe, with the catch basin and it was not in the right spot or cover or something like that. Is that being taken care of?
Yeah, we're, there, there's, there's a few of those structures. Some of that was due to, um, location of underground utilities and not being able to fit the structures where the structure really needed to be. We have a couple of different preferred, uh, methods to fix it, particularly, um, specific grates that would, would serve as, um, inlet grates for us, but the problem is those are not readily available. They're on like backorder. Yeah, they're customized. So what may end up happening, and we honestly haven't finalized this with Delory as to how we're gonna deal with it, but what we're anticipating happening is, um, we will make some sort of temporary fix to get through the winter and then that would be one of those kind of cleanup items that they'd come back and swap the cover out next year for the, for the correct, um, cover. So it would mean, you know, a little bit of cutting the sidewalk to get that one structure repaired or put the way it needs to be for the long term. Um, and we tried, you know, dipping into our resources to get a grate from someone else that we could replace, but they just, we can't find any that are available.
Does that take into account, I had a question from, uh, one twelve South Mass about a drainage, um, catch basin that he saw on the plans but weren't at the end of his driveway. Did he speak to you about that at all, Mr. Delory?
Possibly to Alex.
Okay.
Um, I mean, there were some changes in some of the drainage out there. Um, I can't think of all the, you know, but there was, I can think of one structure that was eliminated because, you know, we have them close enough together that we were able to eliminate one and it still drains the next one down, so.
You might want to touch base with him because he is still expecting something in the driveway area, um, a catch basin.
Just to tell the board too, Alex couldn't be here today. He's on a family vacation to Ireland this week, so he's, he's hopefully enjoying himself much more than we are.
The other issue I, I, I believe was around some landscaping and plantings and, um, I think, uh, I'm not sure if it was the type of planting or if my memory is, is killing me here, the type of planting or the volume, the, the number of the plantings. Um, I just kinda want to make sure that that kind of gets, um.
Yeah, those, those kind of things will be, will definitely be taken care of.
Okay.
You know, just to kind of speak to that, I think, I certainly hope the community recognizes that the town makes good on everything we say we're gonna do. So, I, you know, they may not happen next week, but eventually all those things will be taken care of.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Just one comment, um, case for Delory, just as they know, and the warrant PD nine seven sixty-six is gonna prove so that gets cut Thursday.
Just one, one more thing. Again, I, uh, I wasn't really thrilled about reading the newspaper about, you know, the, I just want to clarify a couple of things, uh, regarding Election Day, um, we had to proceed, the, the, the construction progress had to proceed that day and people asked, why did you do construction on Election Day? Well, one, there was no school in session. Two, we knew that it was Election Day. We knew that we would have, you know, decent turnout. It happened to be greater than decent turnout. It was a very high turnout. But because the, the, um, the project was, again, was sequenced, as Carl had mentioned, um, it was critical knowing what the weather was gonna be, that we were gonna lose some days, that we get that work done. And even then, um, the construction happened, it was construction on Saturday and then again, more on Sunday. So, um, the, the timing kind of was the essence. Should we have been in that position in the first place? Arguably, we probably shouldn't have been, but we ended up there. So, um, you know, that was that. Um, our plan for our detour, you know, so we planned on that. Um, did we, did we plan on there being a delay? I believe there was a delay in marking out for curbing. That set that back. I think that was gonna be, the intent was to do that during the slower period from that ten to two window. Unfortunately, there was, uh, there was not markings for the curbing that was done. The curbing contractor comes and had to wait for the markings to be done, um, so they could set it. And that turned out to be, you know, a problem. So, uh, the police and, and DPW came up with some detours. Those, those signs went out on the one that you mentioned before, um, Mountain Road to Merrill, um, Park Lane became a, a two-way and, uh, we did our best to, to direct traffic. I, I will say this and I will categorically state this, that there was not one person who was denied the right to vote because of the roundabout construction. Uh, the police, uh, were patrolling the area throughout the day. Yes, we did have some significant traffic backups, uh, between eleven and three o'clock. Um, the roundabout, I believe, was reopened around four thirty, five o'clock. Um, police chief came in somewhere around six fifteen on election night, came in from both directions, said there was no backup. So, um, unlike what was said, stated in the paper, you don't believe everything you read. I've learned that over the years. There were no, no one was disenfranchised or, uh, limited in terms of the ability to vote. Uh, the other thing that we did, um, was we used our Nixle system and that's the townwide alert that the police use to let people know that there were, that there were detours involved. Um, so if you do not subscribe to that, it's N I X L E dot com and you can get those free alerts. Um, the other thing that we did was, uh, we contacted the SAU, the school district. They then sent the same exact message to their email distribution list to all of their parents, so it went out twice. Uh, if you subs, so we tried to, uh, cover it as good as we could. The detours were set up, um, and I know that it was on some radio stations as well. So we tried to do our very best. It was not something that we had planned for, but like all good things, you rise to the level and you do what you gotta do and I believe we did. Um, we did the best, very best we could, uh, considering the circumstances. So, um, in closing, yes, this has been a frustrating project, I'm sure, for the construction company. I know it's been very frustrating for, um, for the folks who have to deal with that commute. Um, I've had like every range of emotion in this project. I've, I've laughed, I've cried, um, anger. Um, but we're nearing completion and, and that's a good thing and it, and, and again, we'll, at some point, we have to, you know, when this thing is all done, sit back, what worked, what didn't work, um, and, and learn from the mistakes that have been made. Anything else somebody wants to state?
Just a quick question on some of the paperwork that you've given us this evening, there's a, the change order. Um, there, there was an item in here regarding the train tracks on East Union Street and stockpiled soil. What's this, what's happening with that?
It's, I think at this point it's resolved, right? That's all been gone away?
Yeah.
Those are just, whenever you come across contaminated soils, uh, on a job, you have to take certain precautions and that's what that involves, stockpiling it while the VOCs off gas and it has to be tested and you have to find an ultimate place that'll take it.
And we've done that?
Yeah, that's all been done. It's all.
It's all off-site.
Yeah.
Tom, Tom, I appreciate your reassuring words.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, um, in the background, Ron, Dave, Chris for, uh, being available. And, uh, uh, we're looking forward to good progress next week, this week and next week.
On behalf of Delory Construction, um, I'm the owner, Dave Delory. I would just like to thank you for this meeting. I'd like to commend you on your professionalism and the way you conduct your meeting. And thank you for this opportunity to allow us to come up and be part of this. And though it's been frustrating and difficult, uh, we hope to finish strong for you and we hope that it does solve problems and that the money that we all expend goes to good use. And, uh, again, with, uh, you know, construction in this day and age, I don't care where it is, it, it goes with the territory. It's a difficult, um, difficult profession and, uh, it interrupts. But at the end of the day, it also solves problems and hopes it, uh, makes our lives better for it. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, um, at this particular point, um, I would like to take a five-minute break for the board and then we will, uh, resume. Alright?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've resumed. We just got back from a brief recess. Prior to that, we had a, an update on the roundabout South Mast Wallace Road construction project. In our packets, we have a change order. And as I mentioned earlier, there were some adjustments that the town made, which was outside of the scope of the original contract. One of them was the reclaim of South Mast, that small portion. It was a drainage improvements on Pine Ridge. And I'm trying to think what the other one, if I can kind of go over some of that. And I'll just, you know, for the record, this was a change order number four. There were some things that were, that were decreased the project cost, other items that increased the project cost. And I think, Sue, if you can help me here, the total change is, the net increase was, this was eighteen thousand.
Four ninety-nine.
Four ninety-nine fifty-five. Okay. And it also, in terms of the contract time, that added twenty days to the, to the project. All right. So with that, I would need a, a motion to approve the change order as it has been broken out by.
And authorize the chairman to sign it?
Yes.
Motion to approve change order four to the South Mast drainage improvements and authorize the chairman to sign the document.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman DeVanz.
And this has deadlines in it?
It's on the last page.
Last page.
Ten, twenty-four and twenty-four.
This contract time for change order four will be extended by twenty calendar days.
Right, so that sets the project completion at October twenty-seventh, which would result in about an overage of twenty-five days post-completion. And I'll address that after.
And this change order is strictly to identify and encompass items that needed to be changed during the, we're not adding any additional work. This is to address.
Correct.
The water line that had to be relocated.
Right. Like you see that, like there was plantings that had, that actually decreased.
Drain track removal on East Union and the contaminated soil that was found with it.
I just want to be clear that this is for work that was incurred during the project that was unforeseen.
Exactly, unforeseen, right. Which typically, that's when you build in your price, you're building contingencies and that's what a lot of this is. I think the big thing here is the twenty days of additional time. And I'll just kind of go over some of that. Lowering the existing water line at the proposed box culvert, that was a day. Relocation of, I don't even know what this stands for, DMH ten approximately twenty-five feet off the road to avoid a water line conflict, another day. Water service relocation at Lamson Ave due to sewer installation, a day and a half. Additional installation, I'm assuming of hatch basins, two days. Additional time to install East Union drainage due to changed site conditions encountered as being too difficult to work in and causing additional time to construct, twelve days. East Union Street railroad track removal, day and a half. And Wetherly Hill Road, existing water line conflict with proposed drainage, a day. For a total of twenty days. So initially, the substantial completion deadline was set at September twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten. With these change orders, it would go to October twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten. Now, we're well beyond that date and I'll explain that in a second after we, we vote on this. So I have a, I have a motion to approve the change order as written. It was made a motion by Selectman Pierce. Selectman DeVanz has seconded it. Are there any comments or questions before we vote? All right, all those in favor of approving the change order and allowing me to sign it, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay.
Eagle?
Regal?
One of the, one of the issues, I know folks have asked me, was, okay, we have a contract and we have, it's called liquidated damages. And what happens if the project is not completed by the deadline? Well, now the deadline, as you can see from our, our contract, is October twenty-seventh. We are beyond October twenty-seventh. I'd have to check with DPW, but I believe the liquidated damages were in the area of seven fifty a day. I'm pretty sure that's what it was. Once this, once this project is totally completed, the DPW director, the overseeing engineer will sit down with Delory to negotiate that as part of the overall completion of the project. And we'll get, we'll get an update, you know, on that.
And when you say negotiate that, what does that mean?
Well, they, they will have additional, you know, change, change orders when this thing is, when they go through their punch list. So just like when you have any type of like home construction, there is a punch list at the end of things that have to be complete and that's when those final things get negotiated. That would be my assumption.
I'm saying we're not even completed with the project yet to get to the punch list.
I understand that.
So would they not be, would they not be over the deadline?
They already are.
Just on the project alone?
They already are beyond the deadline. The deadline, as it stands now, is October twenty-seventh. So they are already past the deadline. So technically, liquidated damages, if pursued, you know.
I understand that. So how does the punch list enter into, isn't the punch list those items that just need to be cleared up after the project is completed?
What I'm trying to say is that at the end of the day, they'll be their list of things, which could be change order number five as to things that they did that they encountered, because we're still not done yet. And all of that has to get, you know, hashed out.
Okay, so we're saying that these things that we've just added are not all of them.
I don't believe they are, no. This is.
We just added a whole bunch of things that were unforeseen.
Right, this is change order number four. And there could very well be change order number, we've already had three other ones.
Right, but most of those were to add scope of work.
Right.
This is the first one that we've seen with, because I haven't heard of any other things besides the water line, you know, things that have affected the project.
This was an accumulation of things discovered during the project over the last three months.
Over a period of time.
Okay.
So what else is out there that?
We're not done yet and that, that's why I would assume that.
The truck goes over that another curb and breaks it?
You don't follow what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying. This accounts for all of the things that have delayed the project so far that are listed.
Right.
There, are there any others?
Right.
Correct, because we've already added those days that the delays, that should have been caused by these delays. And that deadline has already gone by.
Right.
So what else is out there that would have caused them to go over the October twenty-seventh deadline and not incur liquidated damages? I'm not talking about things they may find from today going forward.
I, I.
That would have had to be something already.
Maybe I, there may be none, but the chairman was alluding to the fact that possibly there could be and therefore it's not a set time. We, something else could be discovered as to continuing to do the Pine Ridge connection. I'm just, it's just a theoretical statement he made.
Yeah, we're not done with the project, so therefore if there are things that they encounter as they wrap it up, that it could happen.
You're suggesting, is there already three or four items we know of? Well.
I don't think he's suggesting, he's just asking.
Carl hasn't, Carl hasn't mentioned those to us.
I'm suggesting that we're at least two weeks already overdue.
Right.
At seven hundred dollars a day, there's a finite set of liquidated, liquidated damages currently. Would you agree?
Right. And then.
So the only thing that can happen is it gets bigger.
That number would go up in that, you're saying?
Yeah, it can't get any smaller.
Right.
So when you say he's going to negotiate, I don't understand where, what you mean by that.
Because again, we're not done with this project. And if there's other things that come into play, you reconcile at the end of your project.
Next thing is that if you have, let's say it's twenty days right now. It's going to be twenty days plus. It can't go less than.
It can't go less than that.
Can't go less than the twenty days.
Then it, that becomes the board's decision at that, at that time, does this board wish to hold back X amount of liquidated damages because of the, the time, the overtime that was spent?
Or whatever dates plus, is that correct?
Right.
Right, and we've already accounted for things to date that have pulled down the project.
At the end, right. All right. Is there anything else that we have to do other than non-public? No?
Everything's been checked off?
Yes.
Quick question, can we, I know we talked about.
Well, we had a couple of things we wanted to do. Let me just sign this thing.
From EDC, you wanted to discuss those on.
Okay. I wrote a few, I wrote a few things down.
Is it all business, new business?
It was, well, it's kind of, it's what we discussed this evening. One of the issues was the privatization, was the study of fire EMS. And Chief, since you're here, you might as well come on down. Chief, I'll just give you a brief, a brief rundown. At the last budget committee meeting, which you were a part of, there was some discussion about, you know, privatization, taking a look at using a private entity to do our ambulance. We did this, I believe we did, we did some sort of a study during the twenty-four-seven study process with regard to private ambulance service and the.
So I prepared a packet for you in two thousand and seven after a Warren article looking into it.
Right.
And at that time, I believe determined that it wasn't feasible to, to look forward.
You know, the, the other thing that we could do before we even embark on this, because when we do embark on these things, they do take a lot of resources and money in some cases. Do we, you mentioned Warren article, didn't we put something on there? Or should we think about that, you know, as a, almost like a referendum question? Should the town, you know, is the town interested in doing this? That's just another thought.
I think people look to you to do that.
Yeah, because I think we're going to end up in the same position.
Yeah, I, I guess.
You know, I say yea, I guess yea and nay because they do, but sometimes they don't recognize that when we do these exercises, albeit for very good reasons, that if you're trying to get, as Selectman Pierce said, you know, an independent study done, one that costs money. And even if you're doing a lot of it in-house, it can cost ten, twenty thousand dollars of resources, you know, you know, in terms of people's time and they're not cheap either, you know, because you're. Yep.
While we were having that discussion and a couple of things came to my mind, it really wasn't the time or place, you know, that was a different discussion that we were, that we were having there. But as far as this issue with the privatization, I can tell you it goes back, we can go back to ninety-two. Board of Selectmen was looking at having BFI take, we were looking at privatizing the entire trash pickup, having BFI, we were at the point where the Packers were kind of getting worn out and the cost of the Packers and where the landfill was coming to a close and we were going to have to be dealing with transferring and where we were going to go and building a transfer station. And we had looked at just having BFI take over the whole thing. You look at it, we don't have to buy the Packers. We had six people at the time because we had two drivers. We had the shakers, you know, and the, and the trucks. And so you had six people and, and, and the two trucks. We wouldn't have to deal with that. We didn't have to deal with the workers' comp. We didn't have all those issues. And we had gotten solicitors prices and there was a big savings, you know, initial savings when you first looked at, at this, we're going BFI. Well, we were coming close to that and I'll tell you, you couldn't, you couldn't find an empty chair in the selectmen's rooms with people who didn't want it. And the big concern was that you lock into a company and they give you a nice price to get in, you get rid of the trucks, you become dependent on them and then all of a sudden the prices start going up. And that was a concern. And when you, when you look at that, I mean, that's a legitimate point. Over the years, we've had the thing with, you know, JEMSA. And as I said, when we first, Board of Selectmen was first approached by JEMSA, we put a study committee together. I was, I was on that study committee, okay? As long as Felix Pelchat was on that also. And Chief Hunt, he wasn't chief at the time, okay? But we, we looked at that stuff and we studied that and we came to a conclusion that it was better off, that we could serve the community better by having, by not privatizing it, by, by having it in-house. And since that time, we've had, there's been two other times since then that this has been brought up.